Everyone in the audience, please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bates.
President.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Present.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Present.
Mr. Coons.
Here.
Mr. Manera.
Mr. Nelms.
Present.
President Bolton.
Present. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting June 23, 2014, special public meeting June 23, 2014, regular meeting June 23, 2014, special public meeting June 30, 2014, and the special meeting, special public meeting July 7, 2014.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved as presented. Mr. Nelms is Chair of the Policy Committee. Would you please present the June 23, 2014 Policy Committee Meeting Report?
I would, but I didn't chair that particular meeting, so I would like to share that the Chair, Melanie Bates, or was it Alyssa, Melanie Bates, if you have a report.
Thank you very much. And then the, this is great, our next item of business is focused on tonight's presentation will be the Spring Student Athletes All-Stars, presented by Dave Durker, Director of Athletics. And so Mr. Durker is going to come on down here, and we'll start the presentation. Welcome, Mr. Durker. Well, thank you for doing all that you do.
Good evening, members of the board. Mrs. Ronan, Ms. Witt, Administration. On July the 6th, the Enquirer published their Spring All-Stars, all-city, across the tri-state area, and several Cincinnati Public School athletes were given worthy recognition. So I'd like to run through that for you now, so you can say you heard it here. Cincinnati Enquirer, first team, all-city athletes from the spring. In Division One Baseball, we had Eduardo Rodriguez, Western Hills University High School. He pitched and played first base, had 50 Ks in 40 innings, pitched two career no-hitters, hit 411 with 30 hits and 25 RBIs this season. Eduardo Rodriguez, pardon me. In Division Four Baseball, we had Vinnie Vacarriello, played for Riverview East High School, hit 551 with 27 hits, 25 stolen bases. Division Two through Four Softball, should be doing this, shouldn't I? We had Yasmin Betts from Schroder High School, first-team all-conference, all four years of her high school career, batted .382, and as a pitcher, she had an ERA of 0.50 with 72 strikeouts. She was elected C-MAC Player of the Year this season. Division One Boys Track and Field, Ellery Lassiter from Walnut Hills. Hi, guys, back here. Oh, I'm sorry. Division One Boys Track and Field, Ellery Lassiter from Walnut Hills. He finished 12th at the state meet in the discus throw. Division Two Boys Track and Field, Ian Turner, they call him Ian the Burner at Clark Montessori, but Ian Turner from Clark was the district champion in the 100 and 200-meter events. And if you're at Welcome Stadium the night of the regionals, he was in the regional final about five yards from the finish line and pulled his hamstring. Finished fifth on one leg, but of course couldn't compete at the state because of, obviously, but kid is quick, and he's only a junior, so we'll look for him next year. Marcus Johnson, Emmanuel Alade, Devon Jones, and Kyle Johnson from Schroder High School. They were the district champions in the 4-by-100-meter relay and finished fifth in the 4-by-100-meter relay at the Division Two State Meet. So any of these finishes that you see are out of the top eight in that event statewide. So it's pretty impressive. Division Three Boys Track and Field, from Gamble, Montessori. They've only been eligible to be in the tournament for a couple of years, but yet Malik Washington, Anfernee Lipscomb, Jeffrey D. Jeanette, Givante Lipscomb, Devonte Cargile, and Darius Thompson. They were district champions in the 4-by-200-meter relay and finished sixth in the 4-by-100-meter relay event at the Division Two State Meet. And I was at that meet, and people were, I was sitting down to where the team was sitting, and they kept saying, "Who are those guys? Who are those guys?" Pretty, pretty, pretty big deal. Division One Girls Track and Field, Arbria Williams from Withrow. She was Division One District and Regional Champion in the 100-meter hurdles event and finished second, runner-up, in the 100-meter hurdles event at the Division One State Meet, second in the state. Arbria Williams, Amel Osman, Destiny Pennington, and Mercedes Smith from Withrow. They were Regional Champions, Regional is the step after District, Regional Champions in the 4-by-100-meter, 4-by-200-meter, and the 4-by-400-meter relay events, swept all of the relay events for girls at the regional meet, up at Welcome Stadium. They finished fourth in the 4-by-100-meter relay and third in both the 4-by-2 and 4-by-4 relay events at the state meet. So they qualified all three of their relay teams to the finals at Columbus. And I might add that the Withrow girls team finished the meet in fourth place overall out of 76 teams that competed at the Division One State Meet. And that, there's a whole bunch more than 76, because not everybody qualifies to get to the meet, but of the 76 that qualified, they finished fourth for the girls team. In Division One, we also had Taylor Darkes from Walnut Hills High School. She was the district and regional champion in the Division One 400-meter dash and in fifth place in the 400-meter dash at the Division One State Meet. And she has a little bit of a CPS connection, because you may know that her grandmother, Pamela Thomas, is, that's her granddaughter. So she's obviously very proud of that, and many of you may remember her from her time here at CPS. Chelsea Carpenter from Walnut Hills High School was Division One District and Regional Champion in the shot put in the discus, finished fifth in the shot put and fourth in the discus throw at the state meet. As you can see at the state meet, all three meets, we had several CPS people, you know, getting up. Division Three Girls Track and Field, we had Diana Williams, Shakori Blackie, Yanni Alade, Tijana Patterson, and Aishaun Semer of Summer Hill. Walter Schroder, Katie Schroder, had won the 4-by-100-meter relay event the last two years, 12, 2012 and 13. I'm an idiot, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jim.
But you already knew that. Look at you laughing. The Schroder girls had won the 4-by-100-meter relay the last two years, 12 and 13, and competed again this year. They were defending champions in Division Three 4-by-100-meter event, Division Three 2014 district champions in the 4-by-1 and 4-by-2, and the 4-by-4, regional champions in the 4-by-2, finished fourth in the state at the 4-by-100-meter relay, and fifth in the 4-by-200-meter relays at the Division Two State Meet. Division Two, let me get this here, Division Two Boys Tennis, we had Chris Bach from Clark Montessori who qualified for the state Division Two Singles Tennis Tournament, which is quite an accomplishment even to get out of the local sectional to the, to the state meet. So those were the Cincinnati Enquirer All-Stars, published in July the 6th, with a little bit of background on each, very proud of them all, very proud of their coaches. Some of these folks do it against all odds. I mean, if you see where Schroder practices on the bus, on the bus road that they have lined off into 48-inch lanes and Gamble running out in the parking lot, I'm not just taking anything away from them, but these accomplishments are something to be very, very proud of as a district. And before I, before I sit down, I would love for you to, if you are driving anywhere within the area, to stop by behind Withrow High School. You guys have got to see that field. That thing is, I mean, it's second to none. Really incredible. So thanks to the board for doing that, you know, financially making that happen, and I think you'll be extremely proud of the results of, you've got to say that you saw Withrow. And then they're, they're finishing the field tomorrow, and they go on to Clark Montessori and then on from there. So thanks again for, for that support, and on behalf of all of our student athletes and coaches, we appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you, Dave. Are there questions? Comments?
Well, first of all, Dave, thank you so much. You know, this is personal to me, and it's personal to me because I keep saying that I'm a product of this very system. And being a product doesn't necessarily make me an expert, but maybe a leading authority in this particular area. And I also want to just say to the public and those that are here that I remember when this district was very much in a primitive state, it really was, and we was doing things that really we couldn't be prideful about, and we couldn't brag about offering, I guess you could say, first-class opportunities for our student athletes. Now, I want to say that 15 years ago, when the district hired you, and you followed up behind Joe Bell, and Joe Bell was a good man, and he did quite well with, under those times, but I've watched how this district has transformed, not only departmentally, organizationally, administratively, and facility-wise with the vision that you've set forth. There's no perfect leaders or administrators, and most leaders and administrators are very astute at making sure that they hire people that have more gifts, more skills than they have, so that they can be about servicing the community that they're called to serve. Case in point was a Yankee manager that was so secure in his leadership that he hired five other managers to sit on his bench and to be a part of his coaching staff. So I want to say to you, Dave, with the vision that you've had for this district, that we should really apply, salute, and celebrate you at every opportunity. You don't necessarily blow your own horn, and most people literally often complain about what's not going right with athletics or extracurricular opportunities in CPS, but I know the both sides of it, the balance side. So the question I would have for you, one of the things that we have to be mindful about is that extracurricular participation, it complements academic success, it keeps kids motivated about coming to school. Every, every child that I know of in this district goes to school for whatever reason, whether it's forced or voluntarily. It gives kids a sense of well-being, and it creates high self-esteem, it builds and develops leadership, and these are all the qualities that help me and my growth and development. And it allows for our kids to dream and to create post-secondary plans and opportunity. But I want to ask you one question, and I probably don't know the answer, but just for those that may be listening or those that sits on this desk, what tournaments do we host throughout the year?
We host the, we host, over at Withrow High School, we host the Division One Girls Volleyball Sectional Tournament at Withrow, and also in the winter, we host the Girls Division Two Basketball Tournament. Each of those are bracketed tournaments that produce next to the district meet. So we have, we have offered our facilities for that very purpose. We want people to come in from Lakota and from Ursuline and from all these places and say, huh? Where did this come from? You know, I, I say this, when you drive up at night with the lights on around the back of Withrow High School, I mean, it looks like a Division Three college. I mean, there's, there's just no mistake in that. And you guys talk about me not blowing my own horn, you know, you, I know a lot of this levy business, and there's a lot of politics involved, you know, but I mean, the people of this city need to know what good stuff you have to offer their kids, because it's not true everywhere.
And that was not happening before you came on board either.
Well, nothing was, nothing was happening when I came on board.
We had part-time, we had, we had part-time athletic directors.
I showed up for work two days in a row, and they gave me a round of applause.
You did.
That was 16 years ago.
Right.
I'm just saying, I mean, the Stargel, when we built Stargel was state-of-the-art and still is in many ways, and the opportunities that we have, you know, for, for the athletes in this district. And quite frankly, that's why we like to host those tournaments. They, they host the baseball tournaments over Western Hills High School. You should see the compliments we got on that baseball field. I mean, you've got Molder playing in St. X, you know, the district final at Western Hills High School. Who ever heard of that? So again, you know, it's, it's been a partner effort, it's been, you know, you guys and, you know, with the athletic department. But again, I think it's important that, you know, don't hide the light under the bushel, as the Bible says, you know, make sure people know all the good things that, that you guys have made happen for these, for these kids.
Thank you, Dave, so much.
They just get one shot, I told our A.D.s, I said, you know, we get to do this 30 times, 20 times, they get to do it once, you get to be a senior one time, and we owe it to them to provide them the best experience that we can. So I'll get off the soapbox and go back to my seat. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I would only, the only thing I would add, and it's such a positive report, and thank goodness the Enquirer follows up on this, but unfortunately, in the front page where this section happened, there were beautiful, wonderful young people, but there wasn't a CPS representative.
Yeah, so maybe we need to respond to the editor.
Whoever you know.
Yeah.
Has anything to do with the Enquirer. We need some of our beautiful children on the front page in that, too.
According to it.
Yes.
I think this is a good, a good example, per your demonstration of the Enquirer ad, to just talk about how our public affairs has to wrap itself around every entity within the district. You know, Mr. Nelms gave, I don't know, four or five examples or reasons why athletics are so important, and it's very personal for me, too. We have a student athlete who plays in the greatest facility and has the greatest support in the way of coaches and mentors and teachers and that, but the community doesn't really know. So let's, let's perhaps even use the new Withrow field, which is gorgeous, I've seen pictures, I haven't touched it yet, but, to really talk to the community about the gorgeous facilities and just what an awesome athletic opportunity our students are able to have.
Yeah, Dave, Dave, we got a date, me, you, and Brian, and I'll follow up with.
You taking a tour or something?
No, we, we're going on the Lincoln West Show.
Well, all right.
Then we're going to go down to Dow.
You should, you absolutely should.
Going to go down to Dow after we go on the Lincoln West Show.
Okay. Well, we look forward to that.
I'll let you know when the tour.
Thanks again, Dave, appreciate it. And thanks to all of the partners and entities and volunteers, as well as the coaches and staff that make this possible. Thanks to the families that share their kids with us and trust them with our staff. Announcements and hearing the public is next, so Mr. Nelms, I understand that you have given the kudos over to Mrs. Hoffman.
Yes, I would like to, for my kudos, shout out our H.R. team, and make sure the public knows that last week, we had a presentation at our committee, the whole meeting, where our H.R. team informed us, informed us that we are, in terms of our teacher hiring, we are 87% hired for next year with a plan in place to be 100% hired at least two weeks before the school year starts. This is exciting for so many reasons. It is light years ahead of where we have ever been before, and it, it just, all of the data around teacher hiring that shows that simply hiring early leads to better student achievement. And so the fact that we are 87% hired, and it's July, is just hugely important to transforming our district, and I should say, 80% hired, and we're hiring more teachers than we have in past years. That is a huge Herculean effort, and so wanted to make sure we shouted out our H.R. team.
Thank you. Kudos!
Yeah.
Any other kudos for this evening? We then go to Member Bates to give us the retirements.
Before, before you start.
Oh, you have one?
Yeah.
Why are you just really talkative tonight?
Yes, it's a new me, I had a birthday, it's a new me.
Sunday was his birthday.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I want to also give kudos and a shout-out to our coaches, our athletic directors, and our student athletes within the entire CPS district. So kudos to all of them. I think she just done that, but, we never had double kudos.
Oh, there you go. Any others? All right, Mrs. Bates.
Yes, we have three of our employees who are retiring, and their retirements are up for a vote today. In our certificate personnel category, we have Judith McNamara, who is one of our teachers who is retiring, and civil service Barbara Heckler and Elizabeth Holzopple, and we wish them well in their continued endeavors.
Thank you very much. We are now at the item of our agenda for hearing the public. We have two speakers tonight, they will be limited to three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Witt, our very tough timekeeper over there, will make sure that happens. Yes. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak, and our first speaker tonight is Robbie Todd, who is representing the Alumni Association of SCPA, and he will be followed by Pamela Truesdale, who will be speaking about engineering program at Western Hills. Mr. Todd.
Uh-oh. Don't start yet. Good evening, Madam President, birthday boy, members of the board. My name is Robbie Todd, the School for the Creative and Performing Arts Alumni Association. On July 4th, I don't know if you all saw any of the coverage, but we brought several hundred alumni, former teachers, staff in front of 1310 Sycamore to celebrate our 40th celebration of the School for the Creative and Performing Arts and to take a historic photo in front of the building. We had every media outlet in the city of Cincinnati, they covered it throughout the whole week, they played during the whole weekend, and it's now gone global. And we always tag it with the School for the Creative and Performing Arts, a Cincinnati Public School.
Yes.
Because we are proud to be members of the Cincinnati Public School system. We're also here to announce a public, a partnership that we have with Core Redevelopment, those are the owners of 1310 Sycamore, that we are going to donate our archives to hang within the interior walls of the new apartment building. So now CPS and SCPA will live on forever at 1310 Sycamore. My other thing I want to talk to briefly is, I love my school. I come up here, I come by myself this time, just with one other person, but there's a storm brewing. We found out on July 5th that the Friends of SCPA are dissolving, which is interesting because members like ourselves, alumni, we haven't been informed. So what I'm saying to you is, why don't we be proactive instead of reactive? Let's be proactive now and start a discussion to bring a, a qualified principal and artistic director to the School for the Creative and Performing Arts by doing a national search like other performing arts schools around the country have done. We owe that to the school, we owe that to the students, and we owe it to, for the history of our school, so we can have another 40 years of being a great member of the CPS family. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and congratulations on the 40. Yeah, made under the.
Sorry, I'll make a photo of that.
That would be great. I know we'd love to see that and have that. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Appreciate it. And now we have Mrs. Truesdale on engineering at Western Hills.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Truesdale.
Good evening. I've decided not to give you a quiz over the book that I had given you.
I read the book.
However, I hope that you were able to read it and that you gathered the value of engineering education for all students, and also that you got a feel for the cyclical nature of engineering, and how, rather than discarding things, we reinvent them to make them something better, is usually the path that engineers take. So at this point, I would like to propose two possible reiterations, basically, of the engineering program at Western Hills, to be proposed in addition to the three choices that have been given to the LSDMC to look over for the new career tech program. So this would be in addition to those that they would choose from. The first possibility is to work with Purdue University and a program that they have called EPICS, which is Engineering Projects in Community Service. This program was started back in 1995, where Purdue had all of their freshman students participate in this, and it was an NSF-funded program. In 2006, they expanded that to high schools, and they will train high school teachers to work with that program. The idea is to partner with local, not-for-profit programs to help meet the needs of the community in a better way. And obviously, with all of the nonprofit organizations that Cincinnati has to offer, I think that this has a really strong potential in bettering the city, and also to help deal with some issues that have arisen on the west side, that we could look at some of those things. You know, students might look at things like how to deal with graffiti, everything from graffiti to developing displays and programs for local museums. So it could be a wide gamut of things that they might be able to do. But the whole idea with community learning, or, excuse me, service learning, is that the students drive the programs and that they would take it as an engineering project. The second idea is one that marries an idea from Akron, Ohio, with, with a couple of groups that I've run into. Akron, Ohio has the National Inventors High School Hall of Fame. It is, it is, I'm sorry, the National Inventors Hall of Fame High School, I got that in the wrong order. It was, that's where the National Inventors Hall of Fame used to be located, now it's in Alexandria, Kentucky, sorry, getting ahead of myself, Alexandria, Virginia, near the Patent Office. The idea would be to take the idea of, instead of just engineering, is inventorship, because people, a lot of times, don't know what engineers do, but they understand what inventors do. So the type of students that would be interested in becoming inventors, I think, would be easier, more easily drawn to the program, whereas students who might have the aptitude for.
It's, it's okay, keep going.
Okay. Students who might have the aptitude for being engineers may not realize that they would be suited for the program. In addition to that program, which I've talked to them, and they are willing to do tours, and they have worked with other high schools across the country in building similar programs, within Cincinnati, we have the National Council of Inventors, which meets monthly at the Public Library downtown, and the Public Library is also a depository for the Patent and Trademark Office, and they work with schools and students in teaching them about those issues. To tie with that, I see, is a field of entrepreneurship, which one of the career paths is finance, and entrepreneurship would tie finance into engineering. So you would marry two career tech fields into one and make it much more valuable and also much more marketable, because it would appeal to a wider group of students. So I would hope that you would consider these programs in addition to the other three that are being presented to Western Hills at this point.
Great. Thank you for the information.
All right.
This is very helpful. Appreciate it greatly. Superintendent Ronan, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I wanted to let the board members know that 18 Cincinnati Public School students spent two weeks in New Taipei City in Taiwan. It was a life-changing experience for our youngsters, and they certainly will be able to thrive in a global community after this experience. And New Taipei City is actually putting together the essays that the youngsters wrote about how it changed them, and also the photos they took while they're there, and they're going to put it in a booklet and ship copies over to us. So it was a wonderful experience, our students made us proud in Cincinnati Public Schools.
Great. And once again, thank you for heading up that entourage. Appreciate it.
Madam Superintendent, was your passport up to date?
Yes, my passport was up to date. We got there and back without incident. The students were wonderful. It is a 13-and-a-half-hour flight over the ocean.
Did you enjoy yourself?
Not on the flight, but I loved Taiwan.
There you go. Exactly, once again.
Or it personalizes.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Mrs. Bates moved, and Ms. Danby has seconded. Is that good? Any questions, comments, issues regarding the revised superintendent recommendations? Some of these we were able to deal with earlier. Roll call.
Mrs. Bates.
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Aye.
And President Bolton.
Aye. Is there, so I have a motion to accept the revised report. Is there, so I have a motion to accept the revised report of the treasurer.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Dansby and Bates, there we go, in reverse order this time.
Tagged.
Is there, is there any questions or comments about the treasurer's report? Let me get to it, I think I had one that I can remember. A question, I think, on the, was this the one where we had the community learning centers? And it might be something that the superintendent would address as well. The contracts here for the various partners regarding community learning, does this also represent the three new ones or not?
I am not sure. I'll have to ask Janet Walsh.
It, it does not. We are looking at three new sites for a total of 39 resource coordinators in the upcoming school year. Aiken, Hughes, and Rosalind Condon are still in the process of working with their LSDMCs to establish the vision, choose the lead agency, and hire the resource coordinators. We anticipate that they will be having the resource coordinators in the fall, and the contracts will come through the board as the lead agencies are chosen.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the treasurer's report, Ms. Dansby?
I do, Mrs. Walsh. The agencies that are listed here as the lead agencies and the schools, is this a comprehensive list of all the CLCs and the lead agencies, or are they not all represented?
There are not those three. I need to take another look at them to see if they were comprehensive. I, I did want to note that there have been some changes. You know, there's an opportunity annually for the LSDMCs and the agencies to review. So we do have, we do have some changes, some new lead agencies. And rather than take up time at this meeting, if it's acceptable to the board, I could put that in memo format and send it to you.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the treasurer's report? Roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Nelmes?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. Thank you very much. Are there any inquiries or updates from anyone, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yep, I just wanted to make the board and the public aware that we received word from the Cincinnati Art Museum that they are getting a new storage facility and that the CPS art collection that's stored there will be moved as part of that project. So as folks might know, we own about 90 paintings that are quite valuable. The total collection is, is in the millions. And so the registrar at the museum has assured us that this project is closely supervised by a registrar there and is working with a team of professional art handlers for the move. But we just wanted to make sure the board was aware, and if there are no concerns from the board about entrusting the museum with this move, they'll proceed with the packing.
Thank you for that update, and thank you for serving on that committee. Any other inquiries or updates? Great. Then we'll move on to assignments.
I'm sorry. We have one inquiry.
Okay.
I would like to know, and it doesn't have to be at this exact moment, but an update related to Summer Stars and how we've ended the program, if it has ended, and how our kids did with that second test date that we kept talking so much about.
We've Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Miles, is gonna report.
Hello. Before I get started, I do want to make one more announcement. We had one student who was recognized as an All-American lacrosse player at Walnut Hills. So, his name is CJ Hughes. And I do want you to know that, because that's a new sport that we're starting, and we are trying to expand that across the district. And lacrosse is not a sport that you normally see, but he was recognized as an All-American, and will be honored, they have something out east that he's going to. So I did want to, to make you aware of that.
The Walnut Hills High School.
Oh, the Walnut Hills High School.
The Walnut Hills.
But as far as Summer Stars go, we really pulled together as a team, transportation was very instrumental in helping us with that. Originally, when we looked at the number of students that had not reached that score, we were in triple digits, the high triple digits. We ended up being at about 68 students who might have to be retained, which I think is an outstanding number.
And that's out of 3,000, isn't it?
Yes, out of 3,000 students. So our ultimate goal is to get that to zero, and we are putting things into place to make sure that happens. We had two additional test dates. We had one date that was the last week of summer school that we did a test, and then we had another test date, July 8th, that transportation worked with us. Janet Walsh's department worked with us as far as letting people know and then providing some incentives for the parents to make sure that they were getting them there, the testing office. So that was very successful. We'll be meeting again next week to see what we're going to do next year as far as Summer Stars and the third grade guarantee, getting those kids together.
Thank you.
68, just to be clear, that 68 is after those two tests. We have those results back already.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's, we have a proficiency number that, that we're pretty proud of, but the number of students is 68, when some school districts were looking at having 50% of their kids who weren't going to reach that number. And our teachers, our administrators worked very hard to get it down to that point, and it was really a combined effort, because we had to use the treasurer's office to get money in order to pay people. Public Affairs worked with us, Transportation, Food Service worked with us to make sure that we had food there for breakfast before they took the test and lunch after they took the test. So it really was a team effort to get all of our students together.
I think along the same lines of whoever we know at the Inquirer, to fix that picture, whoever we know at the Inquirer, there should be a headline, that 98, is that 98, 99% of CPS students passed the third grade guarantee? That is incredible work, so thank you to the whole team that made that happen.
What's really incredible, too, about it is that, you know, we talk about, Mrs. Bates is the one that keeps talking about our marketplace. And now that may, forget the other urbans, that makes us very, very competitive, comparable to any of the other 22 school districts in Hamilton County. That's a remarkable achievement that is, I know is going to be featured somewhere from a standpoint of some sort of case study. It's, in its, in its own way, it's as impressive as the turnaround elementary initiative. And it is, forgive the sports analogy or whatever, it's been a full-court press by everybody. And this is what you can do. You can change lives. It's just, it's phenomenal. I think it's a crowning achievement, frankly, Superintendent. Fantastic.
I believe the Inquirer is listening online and has, has been following this, and this is a wonderful follow-up story. And I, I have to say to Board Member Hoffman that one of those great incentives that we use to get parents to get their child at the last testing opportunity was a beautiful lerosis basket. So thank you for that.
Great. Yeah, well, thanks so much for the update, Mr. Miles, and to our superintendent and all the staff. That Summer Stars initiative, I followed it from the very beginning, was just expertly put together, I think, the way that the Public Affairs Office and particularly Rolanda Smith recruited the kids, knocked on doors, did the follow-up and that. So I'm very proud also that you've gotten that number down, and I'm ready for the charge to get that number to zero. Thanks so much.
Thank you all. Any other inquiries or updates, assignments?
There's only the one assignment related to the community learning centers and getting a comprehensive listing and who those lead agencies are.
I have, on behalf of Member Coons, and I second this, we do need to have a follow-up review of what's the impact of the end of the Friends for SCPA, if indeed that's the case, and what we might be able to be doing to help that situation.
My understanding is they're having a meeting on July 23rd to take a vote as to whether or not to dissolve the organization. That is what I have been told.
That would be great if, maybe then on our July, our July 28th meeting, if we can do a follow-up for that, and if, in the meantime, the administration can anticipate what some of that might mean. That would be great. Any other assignments? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Hey, Chris. Come here.